Okay, thank you. Call of the meeting to order. Please rise for implication and pledge allegiance. Supervisor Bishop?
Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and the courage in the decisions that we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so it's full of productivity and respect for one another. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. You please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Johnson?
Has joined the conference.
Very good. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to the Arizona revised statutes. Okay, well, motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on July 16, 2018 at 9:00 AM for discussion consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the Arizona revised statutes to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
We have a motion. And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. On to official business to come before the board. Mr. Esplin, discussion of pending contemplated litigation claims and demands.
Nothing to report to the board.
Thank you. Committee or legislative reports will start with Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At a meeting of the Arizona Utah Economic Coalition, we're working to better extend the days that the north rim of the Grand Canyon is open. Also, I've submitted a report that to Jenny that goes over the management oversight group meeting that was held in Las Vegas for your review if you so care to. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Bishop?
I have nothing this morning.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Wachamota?
I went to the drought contingency plan meeting in Phoenix on the water issue and there is definitely a move toward Arizona speaking with one voice with CAP and ADWR on board and definitely we are looking at a drought contingency plan that will take place within the next couple of years.
I'm glad you were in attendance to that. Mr. Hendricks and I monitored that over the landline and I was impressed by the attitude that was taken by the board that it that the time is now for action. So I believe that this year they will be taking some action to ensure that we have adequate water supplies in the future. I have no further committee report. County manager's report?
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. On to approve the May 22nd, 21st, 2018 board minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried and approved. Okay, at this point, we will move on to the call of the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form. They are located in the back of the room. This must be done prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda with the exception of the consent agenda and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. First speaker this morning would be Jacqueline Chevalier. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I am Jacqueline Chevalier. I live at 3967 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. Chairman Watson, board and staff. I am speaking about the March 5th BOS meeting where Acting Chair Buster Johnson dishonestly displayed several photographs and made false statements. Here's one photograph here. And made false statements about me not related to the agenda item. And this is a graphic. I was going to say warning, sorry. This picture showed by Mr. Johnson with an injury to Blueberry, my AKC registered German shepherd. You accused me of injuring my dog, convicting me in the public eye. Instead, here is the real picture taken by Animal Control when they took her from my home. Blueberry was not injured before that. Rather, her injury occurred in Animal Control or the Humane Society care. You dishonestly and falsely accused me. You also showed a picture of a mess in my yard from eight months prior, insinuating that it was that way when Animal Control trespassed. I had that cleaned up months before I arrived last December 13th and winter weather and water conditions and a stolen fence is the reason that the dogs were in kennels while the others were being finished. I had a huge one outside for them also. And you're not the only one who has misled the public. Last December, Jean Bishop told reporter that my property had been condemned. False. My property was cleaned up, various vandalisms and thefts, and the county did not condemn it contrary to her claim. Ms. Bishop also obtained confidential information about my water bills, which was an invasion of my privacy. What right do you have to do that? Finally, Ms. Bishop has said that the county intends to come down hard on me to make an example in my case. Is this your plan because you don't like my friends for me to dare to complain about the county's actions? Is it true, Ms. Bishop, that you have five dogs? Do you have your licenses? I'm being used publicly for a scapegoat for your item 36, March 5th. Is this what supervisors do? Chairman Watson, does this board condone this abuse of power, defaming me publicly without a fair trial? And I cannot get that now. Thank you for your allowing me to tell the truth.
Chairman Watson, I'd like to respond to...
Actually, I believe the response is limited to what Mr. Esplin can claim.
So Supervisor Bishop is allowed to respond to criticism, but I think we need to wait to the end of the public meeting and then he can respond to the criticism.
Cool.
Mr. Robinson?
Stephen Robinson, 5373, Highway 68, Golden Valley is my mailing address. First, I'd like to speak to an issue about public records requests. I've made several of them that have been either ignored, abused, or haven't been properly filled, as has other people that I have record requests that have. I requested some records last December or November 13th. That one was thrown away because I forgot to fill out that address and phone number like I had on the other two. So I refilled it out again on December 13th requesting the same information. Six and a half months later, I have not received other than one email saying they are working on it and that's been about four months ago. So that's, I think, my suggestion is that this be looked at by the county attorney's office to take it out of control of the county manager's office because I've seen other cases where information I provided or that I knew existed in the county records was not provided to me. The other issue is I want to talk about Mr. Johnson's March 5th item because there were several factual errors he stated as well. One statement he made was that the dogs were 10 to 25% underweight. In fact, according to the veterinarians' report on January 4th, they were 7 to 10% underweight. To, he claims that the Ms. Chevalier allowed the animal control officer to go into the place. She did no such thing. She did not want her to go in. She was bringing the dogs out. Instead, he, the person, she forced her way into the house and I want to see the inside conditions. I won't talk about the legal issues because that'll be covered under item 42 on the agenda. But getting back to the issue about public records requests, I'm really frustrated that this is a continuous pattern with things that have, I've requested have either not been completely filled or have been ignored like this last one. The date on it is December 13th. I filled it out at Public Works, I believe. No, no, it was upstairs. Thank you very much.
Hi, me Morgaine.
For the record, my name is Jem Morgaine. My address is 4370 North Charles Drive, Kingman. This is my first opportunity to address the Board of Supervisors since the water hearing in Mojave County. But first, let me contextualize my comments with these facts. Mojave County is an arid desert climate with limited water resources. We are experiencing a serious drought. The USDA has declared Mojave County as a natural disaster area zone based on the detrimental effects of this drought. The level of Lake Mead continues to drop. Kingman Water Basin aquifers are being drained faster than their ability to recharge. The current water management plan is not sustainable. Yet Supervisor Wachamota testified that Mojave County should have the same opportunity to grow and develop as Phoenix did. The Phoenix growth is part of what is exacerbating the water crisis that we're experiencing here all on our own. For years, the governing supervisors in Maricopa County allowed developers to make empty promises that their unlimited water resources could never deliver. And now we're trying to, and now they're trying to take our water to meet their overdeveloped need. But we, here in Mojave County, will not have that same luxury because there is no other place from which we can steal water to meet our own overdeveloped need. We need to grow within the means, within our water means. We're already using more water than what we have available. Our current water management plan, as I said, is unsustainable. Please stop promoting more growth and development when we don't have enough water for what has already been allowed to develop. As we speak, the Mojave Valley Irrigation Drainage District is maneuvering to get board members voted on their board who are in support of CAP, the CAP water transfer. We may lose even more of our limited water. Water is a basic human right. Human beings can live for about three days without water. There is not enough water to meet the current demands of the people who live here already. You are the decision makers. Just days before the water hearing, Supervisor Watson told the Kingman Daily Miner that there is nothing we can do. That's not true. There is plenty we can do. It's just not going to make you very popular with the corporate developers and their corporate dollars. I'm asking this board to vote for an immediate moratorium on any new commercial agriculture in Mojave County. We need a sustainable water management plan. Water as a basic human right should trump outdated property water rights, but that fight remains for another day. Do what you can now. Please learn from the lessons of the Phoenix Basin and do not let us end up the way Phoenix has. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Mike and Linda Williams.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us. And Mrs. Wachamota invited us down today to go over some issues on our permits and our use permits for Blondie's Restaurant in Desert Hills. I brought the documents today and also pictures of what our neighbor is trying to accomplish. I don't have a clue what that is, but the easement issue has been, the suit has been filed. Ken Moyer, I don't know if, did you talk to Ken Moyer by any chance, Mr. Esplin?
I'm not talking to you. I'm listening. Sorry.
He was supposed to contact the attorney here and I don't know if he did. I didn't hear. So I brought these documents. The county, I've talked to them at length. Mike Dormant has since retired. He was on, was involved with the project. He signed off our use permit on a contingency that the property on the north side of the business would be paved and striped for parking within 90 days. We did that in actually two days. But he let us open the restaurant and the property that's in question that they made us pave actually belongs to the guy next door, I guess. I haven't got to that point yet. Actually, nobody really has a decision as of yet on that deal. So the, I brought these pictures. I'm going to leave them with you folks. There's no sense in everybody taking, getting involved with that. But since this all started, I called code enforcement to find out if this gentleman across the street from us was in compliance. She said, there's already three other people complained about this guy. So I gave her my phone number. Jenny Nielsen, I guess she's in charge of that. She said she'd get back with us. So about eight weeks later, she called us and said, he's in total compliance, even though he's living in a travel trailer, and he's grandfathered in. And I said to her, I said, so he's grandfathered in and me and my wife are not grandfathered in on this property issue? That struck me kind of funny. And then Mr., the guy parks his car, his pickup, in front of the door of the restaurant. Yes, I got pictures. I called Mr. Hendricks. He was kind enough to take my call. It was a late afternoon. I appreciate that. He since then called the lieutenant at the police department. She went out there, met She went out there, met the guy, and she took a video. And the next day, I was just happened to be there, and then Sergeant, I think his name is Cooley, happened to be there, and this guy and that sergeant were having some serious conversation. So he's definitely parked on the right-of-way of the county, so he had me call a tow truck, the police department did, and have his car towed off, which he did move it before they got there. And then, if I may, I got one more picture to show you. He put this right at the front door, I mean, from me to this podium right here. He wants to lease out my parking that we paid for and for valet parking. Now, there's something, there's something definitely wrong with this situation. I think you're going to understand. But I'd be willing to stay after the meeting to go. I brought the original plans and the permits to, if she, Mrs. Wakamoto was kind of interested in them, of what they required me to do to get the permit. Mike Dormand has retired, but I talked to Gilbert at the building department. He said, "We can reach him by phone if needed at any time over this issue." So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you listening to us. Did you want me to stay, ma'am, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, that completes the call to the public. This morning, we have a presentation from...
Mr. Chairman, I believe Supervisor Bishop wanted to respond to one of the comments, and if the chair would allow me, I'd like to respond to another one.
Okay. I was under the misunderstanding I had to be at the end of the meeting, but it's the end of Call to the Public.
Correct. At the conclusion of the Call to the Public, we, or board members are permitted to respond to criticism.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to respond to Jacqueline Chevalier's comments. When I lived in the unincorporated area of Mojave County, I did have four little poodles. One has since passed over the Rainbow Bridge, but I can tell you that my three poodles are current on their vaccinations, and they are licensed with the City of Kingman. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, my staff is incredibly efficient, and they do an outstanding job. We do get a lot of emails, requests, and we try our best to fill them or to make sure the departments fill them as appropriate and as required by law. And I'm looking at an email or a public request from December 6th from Mr. Robinson, asking for all emails, and I'm not going to go into detail, but it was referencing Golden Valley and Golden Valley Improvement District from a certain time period. And then I show that, and my staff confirmed, and I see the email that actually went out to Mr. Robinson on January 5th, 2018, just shortly after the request. I think that's pretty outstanding service for as extensive as it was and how many, how many, how much time it actually tied up and took our staff to respond. And I see the email from Linda Kelly to Steve Robinson, January 16th. This is in response to your public records request relating to Golden Valley GVID emails. The link below has been created for you to access and will expire at 8:43 a.m. at the 15th day from today. Please reference the attached email download instructions to retrieve the records. Not only did we not copy these emails and charge Mr. Robinson for them, we actually were provided as much convenience for him as possible and put him in an electronic format so that he could access them at his leisure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time.
You're welcome, Mr. Hendrix. And I'd like to make a brief rebuttal to Ms. Morgane's claims of Chairman Watson saying that Mojave County could do nothing. Actually, that was a misquote, Ms. Morgane, from the miner. My direct quote to those folks, I believe, was Mojave County does not have the direct jurisdiction of water issues. Only the legislature has that in, that encumbered. So I'm sure that the miner will correct those issues. Onto the presentations. Presentation of a life-saving award to Sherri King by our Sheriff Doug Schuster, Mojave County. Good morning, Sheriff.
Okay. Chairman Watson, distinguished members of the board, County Manager Hendrix, Mr. Esplin, and of course, our clerk, Ms. Anderson. I'm here this morning to recognize an outstanding citizen of Mojave County, and I'd like to set the stage. On April 27th of this year, Deputy Davis conducted a traffic stop on Highway 91 in Beaver Dam, and the driver pulled into the parking lot of the Little Dam Car Lot, which just happens to be owned by Mrs. King. The driver exited his vehicle and was contacted by Deputy Davis. It was learned that the driver had no driver's license and began to walk away from the deputy, refusing to cooperate with verbal commands. Deputy Davis advised the driver he was under arrest. When Deputy Davis attempted to physically make the arrest, the individual became immediately combative. During the assault, the suspect was able to gain control of Deputy Davis's taser, and he was attempting to gain control of his firearm. At this time, a local citizen who witnessed the incident stepped in, and that would be 70-year-old Ms. Sherri King standing to my left here. She yelled at the suspect to stop fighting with the deputy. She then jumped on the man to assist the deputy. During the altercation, Sherri was thrown to the ground. Sherri did fear for Deputy Davis's life, and she produced a Glock 380 pistol. She fired a warning shot in a safe direction to get her point across, and I'm sure she did. Hearing the shot, the suspect ceased the assault, and he fled the area on foot. I learned about this from District Commander Taylor Nelson. He had this to say. He said, "I can only describe Sherri's actions as heroic. It is probable that Sherri, had Sherri not taken action, either the deputy or the suspect would have been seriously injured or killed in the incident. Her willingness to place herself in danger on our behalf is admirable and deserves our gratitude and recognition." Now, I have had the opportunity to speak with Sherri, and I've learned that her father was in law enforcement for 30 years. When she recognized that the deputy was in trouble, she did not think about her own safety and well-being. She immediately jumped in the fray. In fact, she was able to give the suspect a good right to the chin, according to her, and even got him in a headlock before she was thrown to the ground. Sherri even told me that she was very aware of her surroundings. She chose to fire her weapon at a sand dune, because she knew if she shot it in the air, what goes up must come down. So I agree with Commander Nelson's assessment and the recommendation of this award, and I am honored to approve it and award it. I'm very thankful to Sherri that she did everything in her power to help Deputy Davis in this deadly situation. Now, normally, I would voice my concern about citizens firing warning shots. In this situation, I will say I appreciate Sherri's courage to assist in what could have been a devastating situation. So as such, I'm honored to present Ms. Sherri King with the Mojave County Sheriff's Life-Saving Award. I'll read, I'll read the award off. It says Mojave County Sheriff's Office Life-Saving Award presented to Sherri King for risking her own safety on April 27, 2018 by coming to the aid of a deputy in peril. Deputy Davis was being assaulted by a suspect who had obtained his taser and also was reaching for his weapon. Sherri took a quick and selfless action and grappled the suspect. In doing so, Sherri was also assaulted by the suspect. Due to Sherri's heroic intervention, the suspect gave up his assaultive actions and fled. Had Sherri not acted on our behalf as she did, it is possible that the deputy or the suspect could have been killed or seriously injured in this incident. Again, round of applause for Sherri King.
Thank you, Sheriff Schuster.
Awesome.
And Sherri King, thank you so very much for being such an outstanding citizen. Sherri, are you giving lessons?
I didn't tell her we were hiring. I just...
Very good. Let's, one more round of applause. Okay, now on to the consent agenda. Items 5 through 34. Following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. So we will start with Supervisor Johnson. Do you have any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 5, 27, 29.
5, 27, and 29?
Correct, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
No, I have none.
Supervisor Angus?
31.
Supervisor Wakamoto? Okay, Chair, would entertain a motion for the acceptance of the...
Chairman Watson? If I may, sorry, if I could ask that the board pull item 33 as well. We had an email come in this morning that I just need to provide the board with a little more information.
Okay, well, I will add item 33.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay. On the consent agenda, with the exception of items 5, 27, 29, 31, and 33.
I'll make that motion to approve those items.
Second.
A motion and a second for the acceptance of the consent agenda with the exceptions of item 5, 27, 29, 31, and 33. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 5. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any appointments we do to PCs now are only good through December. I think this is, there's not a need for this this time, in my opinion.
What?
We just had the election.
What, we appoint? The PCs.
Okay.
Chairman Watson? But this is, this is how we always do it. As they come up, we appoint them, and then when the time is up, they, you know, they're appointed PCs.
Right.
Right.
And I have no problem with it.
Okay. I make a motion to approve item 5 as written.
We have a motion for the approval of the appointments of the following Republican PC committee men. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, you'll do a roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Onto item number 27. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm curious on this one. We seem to be spending an awful lot of money on attorneys here. Maybe the manager or somebody, we're getting way out of whack on the, on the money. Maybe they can go over that for me?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I didn't hear your question. I'm sorry.
On the attorneys, we seem to, the expense seems to be getting outrageous on this, going out to hire people. Do we have a problem in the county? Are we getting over budget on the hiring of attorneys?
And, and thank you for your question. Very, this, this past quarter, the Public Defender's Office has had numerous attorneys leave for various reasons. We had a, a couple that were attorneys in the office left to go because of a new child or children, went back to Miami for, to be closer to family. There were some other attorneys that left. And so we had a considerable amount of vacancies, and they weren't able to adequately fulfill their obligation. And so there was, with contracts, and there was a considerable amount of overflow that was occurring. Since that time, the PDO has been able to hire attorneys. Right now, they have two vacancies, but they're also interviewing. So they've dropped their vacancies from, I believe, four or five, down to only two just recently, and it looks like they're going to be able to fill those positions. One of the things that I had talked to them about with the vacancies is we were working with Indigent Defense Services to try to not take on any more cases and concentrate on filling positions. So that was creating the overflow. We could, and this past, within the past two weeks, discussions that I've had with the PDO is for them to resume taking cases. So the overflow numbers, the amount of money spending on outside attorneys should drop significantly. Now, one of the questions that I asked the PDO and Indigent Defense and also our, our finance director is to take a, keep a close eye on this and see where we're actually at with the overall budget, which is the important number. You know, are we going to be overspending? And we could certainly, if you wish, call on our finance director, Ms. Lloyd, to come in and address that. And correct me if I'm wrong, it was my understanding that it's going to be close.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, Supervisors. The answer to that question is it is going to be very close. It is just now the end of the fiscal year, and we will have bills outstanding through June 30th to pay over July and August, and I'm pretty sure that we're going to be coming back with a contingency request for this department. Or in years past, you've allowed us to combine the, the total budgets for the, for the defense area to utilize any savings amongst those.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Question from Ms. Lloyd?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does that satisfactorily answer your question, Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one follow-up, so we think that we'll be able to go next year with the budget we have. Manager Hendrix?
I believe that her comment was that we'll be very, very close.
And Mr. Chairman?
This year, but I mean, the one we just passed. We foresee this is going to be an ongoing problem. That's what I was curious about.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hendrix?
Supervisor Johnson, we're not proposing to increase the Public Defender's budget. We believe that if he's firing on all cylinders, he should be able to handle the, the intense caseload that we're anticipating. When he was fully staffed, previous to this particular episode of not having sufficient attorneys, they were doing a fantastic job addressing the caseload. So if he has, if he can get fully staffed, we should be just where we, right where we should be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix.
That answers all my questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And thank you. Would you care to make a, a motion?
We're allowed to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 29. Approve the lease agreement for the commercial office space in Bullhead City on behalf of Mojave County Probation Department. Mr. or Supervisor Johnson, I believe you pulled this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some questions on this. I saw no drawing on this to see exactly what the space is being used for. Does the manager know how many people are going to be in this building?
Mr. Hendrix?
If it pleases the chairman, I believe Mr. Palomino's in the office, and he could certainly answer that question.
Front and center. Good morning, Alan.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson. We have approximately... We have approximately nineteen staff that'll be housed in our Bullhead City office location. Vacancies are all full. There could be a potential of up to twenty-one within the next year.
I see no drawing for what this space is going to be used for. This is a large space, what, you're close to six thousand square foot?
I believe it's a little over six thousand square feet, just under seven thousand square feet. This office is going to be designed much like our Kingman probation office, in the sense that we'll have a secure area for staff, there'll be a public lobby for adult probationers, a public lobby for juvenile probationers, and then a screening area and restroom for each, where drug testing can take place, things of that nature. And then we'll have interview rooms as well, and a conference room, the staff work areas, some offices for supervisors, both adult and juvenile.
Now, is the office spending seventy thousand dollars or somewhere around there on remodeling this building, is that included in the monthly rent of fifty-three hundred dollars, or is that in addition to that?
That is not included. This item has been in progress for about a year and a half. It was part of our budget proposal for last fiscal year and again for this fiscal year. The county's portion of that seventy thousand dollar remodel is about twenty thousand dollars. The rest of that will come out of our probation money, for our fees account.
But it's still seventy thousand dollars from the county?
Yes, with fifty thousand, that coming directly from probation fees account, yes.
I guess my concern on this, and obviously we have to give a board decision, we have to figure out where to get the money, but when we're looking at spending money on a remodel and the amount that it's costing us per month and the size, we own land, we have leased land up there, did we look at building a building that, you know, would last us instead of renting a building?
I personally have not been involved in looking at purchasing and building an actual county-owned probation building in Bullhead City. I'm not sure what's happened in years previous to my tenure as chief. What I can tell you is our current location is no longer really acceptable for the business that we do. This location is ideal for many reasons. It puts us closer to the court, other county entities, treatment providers, it's within the bus route, so indigent probationers who do not have the ability to provide their own transportation can ride the bus. That's the history that I'm aware of, Supervisor Johnson.
Okay. The average square foot for an employee, which would include restrooms and common areas and that, for regular businesses, is around a hundred and fifty square foot. So with the amount of people you're going to have or propose to have, we'd need about thirty-one hundred and fifty square foot. And obviously, you need, you know, some more space because you're running, you know, I guess running a dual reception area there. It's also been brought to my attention that there's a gym being built inside this also?
There's a portion of the building that has been designated for a gym that could be used by any county employee. It'll have card reader access, so any county employee would be free to come and use that facility, yes. It's in the back portion of the building. We did designate an area for a gym.
Okay. I guess those are the only questions I have, Mr. Chairman, the cost, and obviously, if now we're building another gym in that area, I just have some concerns with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Angus?
First of all, I know this has been a long time in the making. The last facility was bad, and you've had to move for a long time. This is a perfect location, it's a perfect building, like Ms. Palomino said, that it's right in the middle of where all, everything is. It's near my office, it's near the courts, and I want to address the gym. I was approached, probably about a year ago, about it, and I went to the trust and asked if they could give, I think we are giving five thousand dollars or something to buy some equipment. There's several gyms up here in Kingman for employees, so there's nothing in Bullhead City. I thought that that was reasonable, and that's why I helped with it, making it happen. And I wish you success. I think this is going to be a very good addition and much-needed addition to the Bullhead City area.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus.
Any questions for Mr. Palomino?
No, I think this is a good move for you. Having visited your old probation office many times, it's antiquated, it's not suitable, and so congratulations on this move.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Wakamoto.
Thank you, Ms. Palomino.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop?
As I've stated in the past, if there's any way that we can own our own building or build our own building, I think that's always a better solution. If we can't do that and we have to lease, then that's the way we need to go. So I will be voting yes on this, but I'd like to see, in the future, you look to find a location where we can build an appropriate building or use one of our existing buildings. So I don't like renting or leasing if we can...
Supervisor Bishop, I don't disagree with that. I just think it comes down to funding, you know, to build a building the size we would need to conduct our operation. I don't think, it would be cost prohibitive at this point based on revenues and what the budgets have to offer.
Ideally, I'd like to see you out of business where we don't have anybody in our jails or on probation, so...
I would agree with that, too.
If you could shoot toward that goal, I'd appreciate it as well.
Fortunately, the trend's going the other way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve item twenty-nine?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item number twenty-nine. Any further discussion? At this point, I'd like to have the clerk for roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to, onto item number thirty-one. I believe this was also pulled by Supervisor Johnson?
No, it was me.
Oh, it was you? Okay, Supervisor Angus, I'm sorry.
Well, when I read this, I was, I was a little taken aback. It says, "Approve the donation of twenty-nine ballistic vests and carriers that are no longer deemed effective by the manufacturer to nonprofit Mojave County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue Organization who will recycle the vests to volunteers for range use." Well, if they're ineffective, I don't think this is something you want to be ineffective, so I put my mind at ease here.
Supervisor Angus, what I can tell you is ballistic vests come with a five-year expiration date. That's as long as a manufacturer is willing to warranty the vest to hold up to the ballistic rating of the vest. What I'll tell you about our vests are we don't wear them for eight, ten, twelve-hour shifts, nonstop, in and out of cars, you know, in and out of the heat. Our vests, you know, since we have office duties, court duties, we do wear them in the field and in high-risk situations, but our vests take on much less wear than a typical deputy or police officer vest would. So in the past, when we've had our expired vests, the sheriff's search and rescue has asked to receive those as a donation. They're asking that again of these expired vests. In a couple months, when our next round of expired vests come through, you'll see another...
It's something you don't want to hear, expired vests, but if you say that's the norm, I will...
Well, my understanding is, once they receive the vests, they actually have them inspected by a third party, and they'll give them, you know, some insight as to whether or not they're appropriate for use on the range or whatnot.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Is that...
Yeah, that puts my mind at ease, yes, thank you.
You just have to be aware that you're wearing the vest without a warranty, right?
I'll add that there are nonprofit companies around the nation that solicit for vests like this, but they require us to pay for the shipping, and you can imagine what shipping might cost on twenty-nine vests that weigh multiple pounds, so we decided to keep those local and help out our search and rescue.
Very good, thank you.
I make a motion to approve item thirty-one?
I'll second your motion. We have a motion and a second for the approval of item number thirty-one. Any further questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number thirty-three, and this is an item that I should have pulled myself, but thank you for reminding me, Mr. Walsh. This has to do with the water service agreement with the Cerbat Landfill and Origin Mining Company. Mr. Hendricks and I met with folks at Origin, and so, Mr. Hendricks, would you like to outline a few of the issues that we have with this?
Just want to let the board know that there are a couple minor changes from the agreement that are, is included in your packet that we would like to have included, that will make our issues with this agreement easier. One of the, one is a necessary change to the date, and the other item basically is where it talks about payment and remittance, that it would also include to pay Mojave County, or for Mojave County to pay, or one of its associates throughout the whole agreement, which would allow the actual user, which would be Gambi disposal, to pay directly any charges for the water. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
If I'd have asked for that language and any other minor scripters to be included in the agreement, and then I'll bring it back for your signature.
Okay. I'll make an attempt here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached water service agreement, and also authorize Mr. Hendricks to make those changes necessary to fulfill the contract.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto the next portion of our agenda this morning, the public hearings. Open the public hearing for item number thirty-five. Discussion possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-082 for the rezone of Cecil's parcel number 120-05-087 for a commercial recreation zone to a residential recreational vehicle zone to allow for an RV subdivision in the Lake Havasu vicinity south of Arnold Palmer Drive in Mojave County. The commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up for item number thirty-five. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item number thirty-five? Okay, I'll close the public hearing for item number thirty-five and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve item thirty-five?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item number thirty-five. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Open the public hearing for item number thirty-six. Discussion possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-083 for the preliminary plan for Leonard Bridge RV Resort Track 3713, being a proposed subdivision located in a Cecil's parcel number 120-05-087, being a portion of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Township 14 in the Lake Havasu City vicinity. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item number thirty-six. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item number thirty-six? There being none, I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve item thirty-six?
We have a motion for the approval of item thirty-six.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number thirty-seven. Open the public hearing for the discussion possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-0084 for a special use permit for Cecil's parcel number 120-05-213 to allow for crematory in the highway commercial zone in the Lake Havasu City vicinity, west of Highway ninety-five, north of Lake Drive. The commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item number thirty-seven. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item number thirty-seven? Being no one willing to speak, I'll close the item, number thirty-seven, and entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve item thirty-seven?
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item thirty-eight. Open the public hearing for the discussion possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-085 to amend the Mojave County general plan from a rural development area land use designation to a suburban development area land use designation for the east half of Cecil's parcel number 317-04-298. This is in the Dolan Springs vicinity, it's north of Knight Street, west of Johnson Road, in the Mojave County general area. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one listed to speak to item number thirty-eight. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item thirty-eight? There being no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing for item number thirty-eight. And entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number thirty-eight, and I wanted to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with the following conditions, and one of those conditions was that there be a bladed physical access road traversable by a two-wheel-drive passenger vehicle for each parcel resulting from the proposed minor land division from that site to the southeast corner of Section Five, being in the intersection of Joseph Road and Ninth Street with the right-ofways and road easements.
Okay, very good. We have a motion. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number thirty-nine. Open the public hearing for the discussion possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-086 for the rezone of the east half of Cecil's parcel number 317-04-298 from agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size to agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Dolan Springs vicinity. That's just north of Knight Street, west of Johnson Road, in the Mojave County general area. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. There's no one signed up to speak to item number thirty-nine. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item thirty-nine? No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing for item number thirty-nine.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve with the same staff recommendation.
We have a motion. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number forty. Open the public hearing for the discussion possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2018-076, approving and adopting the revised Mojave County Drainage Design Manual based on the revisions outlined in Exhibit A, with the needed changes to address the document updates, minor refinements in the science of hydrology, and updates regarding stormwater, subject to all conditions of the initial approval... subject to all conditions of the initial approval outlined by the Board Resolution 2009-279. If no one wishing to speak on item 40, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to item number 40? There being none, I'll close the public hearing for item number 40.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve item number 40.
We have a motion for the approval.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Angus. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto the regular agenda, item number 41. Discussion possible action, approve the appointment of three applicants to fill the vacant positions in the Building Code Advisory Board, that being the architect, the public representative, and one of the unspecified positions. Mr. Walsh?
Chairman Watson, members of the board, good morning. What this item here is, is the county has established a Mojave County, the Building Code Advisory Board. And the Building Code Advisory Board is actually in state statute. It gives the county the authority to establish a Building Code Advisory Board, which is there to determine the suitability of alternate materials or alternate material or alternate methods of construction under the provisions of the Mojave County Building Code and to provide for reasonable interpretation of the provisions of such code. The Building Code Advisory Board also acts as a board of appeals in relation to a decision made by the chief building official. Currently, we have four members serving on that board with the ability to have seven on the board. So, right now, it requires attendance by all four members in order to have a quorum for that group. State statute lays out the consistency of the board, and it's a little bit different than your typical commissions for the county. This one is more geared towards the qualifications of the members, and those are, I'll just go through them real quick. One is an architect duly licensed in the state of Arizona. Another is a professional engineer duly licensed in the state of Arizona. Third, a general contractor duly licensed in the state of Arizona. Fourth, a person representing the public and a resident of the county. Fifth, a person engaged in the electrical, mechanical, or plumbing trade. Currently, the four members that we have cover three of those positions. We cover the general contractor, the engineer, and the electrician with our current members. The departments reached out to a number of applicants or a number of folks within the county and requested applications from them. We received six applicants or applications. Rex Rugie is an architect, and he's located in District 4. Dan Renner is an insurance agent in District 5. He also is involved with solar systems and doing that type of work. Tyler Engel is a general contractor located here in District 4. Randy Shuffler is a realtor located in District 3. Richard Hamilton is a general contractor located here in District 4. And then James Carton is a firefighter. And I need to make a correction. The memo showed that he was in District 1. He's actually in District 2. But what we're requesting the board is an appointment of, from this pool to the Building Code Advisory Board. The recommendation that we have is Rex Rugie is the only architect that we received an application for. So, we would recommend that he be appointed to fill the vacant architect position. For the position of the person representing the public, we would recommend that either Dan Renner, Randy Shuffler, or James Carton be selected to fill that position. And then for the final vacant position, we would recommend that any of the remaining applicants that are not selected for those first two positions be selected for that remaining position. Thank you.
Chairman Watson, may I ask a question? When your department, you said they reached out to the community. How did you do that?
We initially reached out to the existing members of the Building Code Advisory Board and asked for any context that they'd be aware of that would help us fill these positions. And then with some of their recommendations, we reached out to everybody that they recommended. And then there were also some that were aware of the vacancies and asked us about them. And then if we were aware of any, we also reached out to those as well.
In the past, has this been something that the Board of Supervisors did through their districts? I'm just concerned, I just didn't know about it. And there's really nobody from District 2?
And to be honest, it's a little bit different than our normal commissions where each board member gets to select those applicants for their specific district. This one, it's more geared towards the technical qualifications of the applicant. So, it pulls it back a little bit. And to be honest, I'm not sure on the initial appointments. I don't know if, but County Manager Hendricks on the spot, if you're aware of how they were initially selected back in the day. I apologize, I don't have that.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't, even though I was probably here back then. But the way the makeup of this commission is, it makes it almost impossible to, unless the board designated, the architect gets selected by District 1, contractor gets selected by District 2. It almost makes it impossible to select by district. So, you know, the only slam dunk nomination from the applicants that we have currently is we have one, we've got to fill an architect position. We only had one application from an architect. I guess there was a question that came up, should we have extended the outreach? And that was a great question. If these individuals are qualified and are desirable, you know, I think time is of the essence in trying to get a full board because we're at four currently. And it makes it difficult to have a quorum, and we've got actions that we have to address and things that the board needs to be doing. So, if the board could, at this time, you know, make their selections and try to get at least a full board, possibly we could look at structuring something that would be more in line of what the board wishes to do moving forward.
May I ask another question? And once someone's on this board, is there a term?
There is. I want to say, it's a good question. Let me see if I've got that in the backup. I believe I do.
And while you're looking for that, because there are some people on this board, it's nothing personal again, but they've been on for a very long time as well as on P&amp;Z. So, you're having sort of the same voices on both boards. And so, my experience has been, I think we need a lot of different voices. And at some point, when is too long, too long, you know?
Chairman Watson, I can answer Supervisor Angus's question. It's a four-year term, so they serve for four years, but there's no term expiration. So, they can serve for as many terms as they wish.
Right. So, but I don't remember getting when there is another term. So, they decide. So, if they want to serve again, I don't remember us getting that to make the decision whether or not we wanted to continue with some of the people that are on it. And again, it's nothing, it's just a process thing, a question I'm asking.
Chairman Watson, can you, or maybe Supervisor Angus, which ones are on the P&amp;Z board?
Mehdi and Keith Walker.
Oh, I thought you.
Oh, not on the new ones. I'm talking about the existing ones. So, I'm saying that I don't remember if that ever came in front of us when their terms were over. And, yeah.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, when those terms expire, we do bring them back to the board for, yeah. I believe we had some, I want to say about a year ago, we brought at least two, at least two back to the board for approval.
You need one more person to make a full board? Is that what it is?
So, if I may, state statute says that the advisory board shall consist of at least five, but not more than seven members, and shall include at least members from the following categories, and then the five that I listed. So, we can have up to seven, which in holding meetings and pulling folks from all over the county, it's beneficial to have the full seven in case there are some that can't make it. But according to state statute, it shall consist of at least five.
And we are missing the architect.
We're missing an architect and a person representing the general public.
Oh, okay. Okay, so can we just go and say, make a motion to appoint Rex Rouge? Is that how you say his name?
Rex Rugie.
To fill the architect position because he was the only applicant for the architect. Right?
I'll second that.
And do you want to include the public?
You want to do it all at once?
Do the whole, if that'd be possible.
Okay, so I'm going to take a stab and say to appoint Rex Rouge to fill the architect position, appoint Dan Renner to fill the person representing the public position, and Richard Hamilton. Can we, that's why, because he's the only other one I know, if anybody wants to.
I think that was for the general contractor, is that correct?
So, the vacant positions that we have are the architect, which Rex Rugie would fill that, and then the person representing the public, which Dan Renner would be one of the qualified applicants to fill that position. We have a seventh, well, a third, a third for this that can, that basically is open to any position. It could be a contractor, a general public, any.
Can I, so I can do that for Richard Hamilton? So, that's my motion for those three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll repeat it as best I can from memory. The architect would be Rex Rouge, the member of public at large, Dan Renner, and then the other position would be filled by Richard Hamilton. Is that correct? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 42. This is the discussion possible action, review of the Mojave County animal ordinances and state animal laws and regulations, and provide direction to the county attorney's office and county staff regarding possible changes and updates. This is brought to us by Mr. Esplin, and I have two people wishing to speak.
Chairman Watson, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I've previously given to IT. If we could have that queued up. And if I can make go from the podium? Sure. Thank you. And I forgot to ask IT, how do I go to the next slide? Is it just touch? No? Underneath. Ah, got it. Right here? Oh, wow. Fancy. Okay. Thank you. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. What I have today is a presentation, a general presentation about the county ordinances, the animal county ordinances, as well as the state law. Couple of things that I want to lay out here at the very get-go is whenever there's an issue or a violation, some kind of criminal act or a civil act, a proper forum, there's always, you have to determine, where's the proper forum to litigate it, to determine it, to decide it. Occasionally, issues come before the supervisors. But in this instance, really, in particular, they're issues for the court. This is where if somebody has a problem, if somebody has some kind of a violation or alleged violation, then what will happen is there'll be a court process. That's what due process is about. And they'll go to court. And if there's, and if the litigant believes that there was an illegal search or if the ordinance is somehow flawed, they can raise that issue in court. And that's what you do. And I've, as, before I came to the board, when I was in private, when I was working as a defense attorney, if I thought that there was an illegal search or seizure, then I would raise that before the court, and we would litigate it, and a judge would decide. So, many of these issues can be decided in court, and that's the proper place to do it. So, really, what I'm presenting to you today is really just a general overview, some ways that we can improve, some things that we do right, I think. And so, this is just kind of general, this is what we've got. But I'm not going to go into specific cases. I'm not going to address specific instances. I'm not going to address, you know, this person did this or did that because this is not the proper forum to do that. So, that being said, the first thing here is we have three main ordinances, and they're laid out there. One is the animal control, the second one is the public health, and the third one is the zoning ordinance. And if you look, each one has a specific purpose. And that's something you really got to understand. The first one that was passed, the animal control one passed in 1994, it's essentially a law enforcement function. Those are the vicious dogs, the dogs-at-large, the animal cruelty statutes. Those are things where an animal control officer is going in because of violation of the law. And so, that's the purpose that it's serving. The second one is the public health function. If somebody's got, if there's a kennel, a public kennel, it's a business that's being run, and we've got to make sure that the public health is secure and safe, that things are done properly so that we don't have, you know, people getting sick and animals getting sick and things. And the last one is land use. We're trying to decide where are we going to place a kennel? Where are we going to place those certain things? So, you got to understand that, you know, each one is serving a different particular purpose. And sometimes what happens is there can be some confusion because somebody will try to overlap one over the other and say, well, this is the definition here, but that's not the specific one. One of the first things you learn in law school is that a statute has a specific purpose, and you're looking for purposes of this specific statute. This is the definition. And so, sometimes you have that confusion. And one is definition of kennel. This has come before the board before, and people wonder and are confused about it. Well, hopefully, I can give some clarity, but there is still some confusion admittedly. If you look at the animal control ordinance, the 1994 one, it lists an enclosed controlled area inaccessible to other animals in which a person keeps, harbors, or maintains five or more dogs. Well, if you look at the public health one, it's a little bit different. It's an establishment at which animals are bred, are raised for sale. Well, animals could be not just dogs. The 1994 one only addressed dogs, whereas the 2007 one addresses dogs, cats, and other things that could be used, that could be bred in a kennel. And then the last one, the zoning ordinance, that one is for, those are for dogs that are four months of age or older, which is a little bit different than the 1994 one. But what you've got to do is you have to look at each specific statute and say, okay, we're addressing this one, we're addressing the animal ordinances. And for purposes of animal ordinances, 1994, this is the definition of kennel. For the definition of public health, this is the definition of kennel. For the zoning, this is the definition of kennel. There is some overlap between some of them. For example, animals for the public health includes dogs, which also is included in the 1994 one, but also in the 2015 one. But a kennel or a cattery where there's cats, 1994 would not apply, and the 2015 would not necessarily apply, at least under this definition. So, you have to look which definition we're looking at. And that's commonly, when somebody comes up here, or they have issues and things, and they're like, well, what's the definition? Well, you got to look at what the ordinance is. That's the definition, and that's what you're looking at. The ordinances can work together, and they should work together. And that's probably really the best thing. And hopefully, we can come up with a way so that all the ordinances are working together. For example, ordinance 21507, the zoning one, a kennel should not be issued to an owner who has been convicted of cruelty to animals. So, here we have a zoning ordinance, and it says we cannot give out a permit if somebody is convicted of cruelty to animals. Well, that would be falling under the 1994 animal control statutes. So, we're working together. If somebody's convicted of animal cruelty, then planning and zoning will not issue them a permit. Another example, let's say the public health is doing an inspection pursuant to their statute 2007-08, and they find that animals are being subjected to cruel and inhumane treatment or punishment. So, what they can do is they can contact animal control to say, hey, while we were inspecting this kennel, we noticed these animals are being subjected to cruel and inhumane treatment. And so, then an animal control officer can come out and issue the appropriate, or conduct the investigation and issue a citation if necessary. That's where the statutes have worked together in order to enforce the animal control statutes as a whole. So, what I've shown already is the three ordinances that Mojave County has. The animal control, public health, planning and zoning. Those are the three really that Mojave County has. Now, there are state animal laws. And the first one, and this is, to me, for our purposes, the most important one for the supervisors, this one gives the supervisors the authority to act. This allows you the ability to pass ordinances within this certain realm so that you can protect domestic animals subject to inhumane, unhealthful, or dangerous conditions or circumstances. There are other statutes as well. I didn't put those in there that the board would have, but this is one of the main ones, the main board's power to pass these ordinances. but this is one of the main ones, the main board's power to pass these ordinances. Now, the next set are in Title XI, Chapter VII, Article VI. I'm not going to go through each one of these. I know that this is not exactly the most exciting subject, so I didn't want to just show you all kinds of different statutes. It's already boring as it is, we'll get even more boring. But, what this is looking at is that in Title XI, it allows counties the authority to pass ordinances for things like running at large of dogs, regulating the barking of dogs, dog licensing, kennel permits, and things like that. So that's, that's the statutory authority, the state law that gives the counties the authority to so act if they wish to do so. Another important state animal law is the cruelty to animal statute. That's a very key, critical, criminal statute that allows the county and the state to enforce any kind of acts against persons who are committing cruelty to animals. Part of that, if you look at the next one, 13-4281, that's the animal seizure statute. So animals that are subjected to cruelty, they can be seized, law enforcement officers can seize them. And then, once they're seized, they can, what happens is there's a judicial process where you go in front of a court, and the judge will determine whether there has been an instance of animal cruelty, and if there has been animal cruelty, the judge can order an animal seizure. And so there's a procedure that goes through that, and those are all allowed by law. Now, so I've shown the Mojave County ordinances, I've shown the state law, and now here are some specific instances where we could make some changes, or don't necessarily have to make changes, but these are some items that have been brought to our attention that may need some attention and some, some addressing. First one, and I apologize if I go into too much legalese, I'm trying not to make it too dry and boring, but it is what it is. If you look at ARS 11-1007, it says, "The county enforcement agents shall enforce the provisions of this article, county ordinances adopted, and so on." Well, our Section 4-3 says, "Enforce the provisions of this chapter, the regulations promulgated thereunder, and so forth." It's a little different. That was a criticism that we had, that this is a little bit different than what the state statute says. Well, okay, we can fix it, we can change it. Pretty simple fix, pretty, pretty simple issue that can be addressed. The next one is 13-3899, and this is not just for animal cruelty or any of the animal statutes, this is in general complaints that are, that are made. A law enforcement officer, when they, when they file the complaint with the prosecuting attorney, or go through the court process, excuse me, what they do is they certify that I've, that I have reasonable grounds to believe and do believe that the person cited herein committed the offense described contrary to law. Well, our Section 4.3B says that they will follow the issuance of citations pursuant to that statute. The criticism was that that's never been included in our provisions, in our, if you look at nineteen, if you look at the animal control statute in 1994, it's not in there. It was, looks like, I can't tell definitively when it was added, but it was added, I believe, when, in 2016, when the ordinances were, when, when we adopted the, the muni code, and muni code made changes and things that, we don't know why some changes were made, and some changes of this and that. It's very convoluted and difficult to explain, but in any event, it was included at that time in 2016, and adopted at that time. So the criticism is, well, the supervisors have never adopted it. Well, it's still the law, it's still law, ARS 13-3899, that's the state law, and they're allowed to do that. So I just don't see the criticism there, that's, but that's been one criticism that we've had. So, the solution, we can just adopt it, we can adopt a new one, we can, we can do the same thing. Another one is the powers and duties of county enforcement agents. If you go to Section 4-3, and again, this is coming from the ordinance 1994 ordinance, it talks about the enforcement agent's duties and responsibilities. And some of the, there's been criticisms that these things have been beyond what are under state and constitutional law. Well, our recommendation is that we look at them. We look at them, we decide if there needs some changes, and frankly, we can make some updates to it. The ordinance that this speaks to was passed in 1994, so we're talking, you know, over 20 years ago. So can we make some changes and updates? Yeah, we can do some, we could do that, and I'm not going to go through the specific details of those, but we've looked, I've met with animal control officers, I met with the sheriff's department, and we looked at some possible changes that could be made, we looked at some other cities in the area, Bullhead City, Lake Havasu, Kingman, we looked at some of these other things and said, "Yeah, those are some things that we could do." The key, though, is that, keep in mind that even if, even if a statute is, is, quote, "illegal," so to speak, let's say that a statute on our book is, is not written properly, that doesn't necessarily make it legal, it's the application, what happens with the application of that statute, and that will be determined in a court. The court will decide, "Yeah, that's, that is a statute that has been illegally used," but it's not going to be, the court is not going to do it as an advisory opinion, you just don't go to court and say, "Tell me, Judge, if this is legal or not." No, there's facts, and there's, there's somebody that has been allegedly harmed, and that, those facts will be presented to the court, and the judge will determine whether the application of these facts, or these facts applying to this law, whether that law is unconstitutional or not. So it's, it's not something that, so certainly, we can look at these things, and we can try to update them, but really, again, it's the courts that will determine whether that is legal or not, based upon the facts as presented to the court. Another one, Section 4-6. This says that any person violating any of the provisions of this chapter shall be guilty of a class-two misdemeanor. And that was the criticism, was that, "Well, this is all class-two misdemeanors." No, unless, and this is the key part, unless another classification is specifically provided by state law. And there are some state laws that say, "Well, we can have a different classification," or this and that. Most of the classifications that we have in our, in our code, in our section, in the ordinances, excuse me, are class-two misdemeanors, but, for example, the animal cruelty statute, that's a class-one misdemeanor, and in some instances, it can be felony, felonious behavior. So, that's something that, that I don't see any changes that need to be made, but there was some criticism of that, but I just don't see the, that it's warranted. Animal control officers are permitted to seize animals, it is allowed. If you look at the, the language on ARS 13-4281, "A peace officer, county enforcement agent, or animal control officer who lawfully seizes an animal pursuant to," and that's the animal cruelty statute. And then you go through the steps, and, and those are things that animal control officers and the courts do. I don't know how often, I don't, I don't handle these often enough to know, but it is permissible, and it is allowed by law. Okay, the last issue that we've received some, some criticism and some concern about, this is dating back to the issue with the Attorney General's Office and the investigation that, that was filed. If you look at ARS 11-1604, it says, "A county shall not base a licensing decision in whole or in part on a licensing requirement or condition that is not specifically authorized by statute." So basically, what that means is that if you are going to, if you're going to issue a license to somebody, you have to follow the criteria that you have set out in your statute, and nothing else. And the, the concern was that, that a kennel permit was being issued, and that they were having an additional requirement that it, that it pass an animal control inspection. Well, if you look at Section 37-J of the Mojave County, of the zoning ordinance, that specifies what those conditions are. And so from that, from our discussions with the Attorney General's Office, and my discussions with planning and zoning, and discussions with animal control, we, we came to the firm consensus that what we, as Mojave County, needs to do is we need to enforce the conditions set out in 37-J. And I've made that clear to planning and zoning, and to animal control, and we've all talked about it repeatedly, that we have to follow the factors in 37-J, and we cannot go above and beyond that. Now, the question is, well, can animal control conduct inspections? Well, they can do, we can, we, we, our answer is, we follow 37-J. And animal control, like any other county employee, can be used to, to make sure that the applicant is following 37-J. For example, one of the requirements in 37-J is, "Has the applicant been convicted of an animal cruelty statute?" Well, planning and zoning can contact animal control, just, "Hey, do you have any records? Do you know, has this person been convicted of, of animal cruelty?" And, and animal control can review that, and they can determine that. So animal control can be used to make sure that 37-J requirements are being met, so that we can give them a permit. And we, 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 as a county, are allowed to do due diligence. If somebody comes in with an application, because the application will say, "Okay, answer these questions," and it'll be the 37-J factors. If, we want to make sure that those 37-J factors have been met, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but we want to make sure that, yep, we cross that, we cross that, and so we're doing our due diligence to make sure the applicant can qualify for it. Now, if they base a decision on something outside of 37-J, then that would be inappropriate. But the proper mechanism to appeal that, there's a, there's an appellate process, there's a, there's a process, if somebody has denied a kennel permit, then they can raise that issue through the process, and you go through it, it's laid out, our ordinances lay out the process, or, excuse me, the, the planning and zoning regulations lay out the process to appeal that if necessary, and that person can do that if, if that's the case. That's the presentation. Can I open it up to any kind of questions that you may have?
Question for?
Well, thank you very much for putting that together. It does put things into order for me. I'm speaking to some people, some judges, there was one slide where you said that we had some latitude to make some changes, and I'm hoping that we can have some discussions, not now, but later on, when I get total clarity as to what some of these issues are, and how they've been rectified in some of the cities, and maybe something we can do, so I think that this is a good beginning to this conversation that I think is needed. So, thank you.
Absolutely, and I'd be happy to meet with you, to go over some specific things. It's hard to give you specifics here without going an hour, or going to a long presentation, but there are some things that we could, we could modify and change to kind of, to get it more up-to-date, so to speak. I'd be happy to do that.
Very good. That's good.
Supervisor Wakamono, anything for Mr. Espin?
No, thank you for your effort and explaining things to me so that I understand things a little bit better.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. My understanding, based on your presentation, is Mojave County's doing things correctly, but we could clean it up a little bit, to, to make it easier to understand, and, and it's also my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the codification that we did a few years ago is what kind of complicated the understanding from the general public, the way that it's put into the codification process, so that it's computerized, so the general public can find things easily, and in this case, it made it more difficult.
I would say that it, it, it made it a bit more confusing, because what happened was, they had to, they had to mash in, so to speak, the, the two, the two most difficult ones was getting the, getting the public health, and then also the enforcement ones together, and they had to change some of the terms, you know, for example, they would say, "As used in this chapter," well, that would change from section, and then, "As used under this section," so you have to make sure that you're using the correct sections for the, for the public health, and which ones for the animal control. And so, yeah, it did make it a bit more confusing, at least, admittedly, when I looked at the issue back in December about, about kennels, I was a bit confused, and, and my position has changed since then, because as I've read it over and over, and then I looked at the original ones, yeah, I would say that the codification process in 2016 didn't help it, that's for sure.
Okay, well, I, I would be willing to, to make a motion to authorize Mr. Espin to work on, on these ordinances, put it together, and maybe put it together in the form of a handbook that the animal shelter and the animal control officers could hand out to the general public, if, if you'd be willing to, to work on that, and it sounds like it might be a process, it could take some time, but I, I think that would help the general public, and, as well as the sheriff's office and the animal shelter, if that could be done. What do you think?
Yeah, but I, I would like to make some changes to the ordinances, you know, have them just updated a little bit, and then work with them. Animal control does an excellent job, they are hardworking, good people that really, you know, try to follow what we've got and things. But I think they, I think, hopefully, they would find it helpful, too, to, to kind of update some things and stuff, so we could do that. So I would suggest if we do a handbook, which I'm happy to do, that we would also, in the process, update some of the ordinances. It'll take some time, we've had some cases that are currently pending, and we want to make sure that those get through the system and stuff, but, but it could come back, as long as, as long as you don't give me a unreasonable deadline.
Right, and then, and then, once that's done, we could submit it to the codification process and get that worked out as well.
Yeah, and there's some other things we'd like, we want to do with the ordinances as well, we want to make some changes to the, to the codification system that we want to bring back to the board, and that's another issue, but for a different day, for a different discussion.
All right.
Okay, I'll second your motion. We do have two people signed up to speak to the item before we take any action. Jacqueline Chevalier?
Yes, I'm Jacqueline Chevalier, live at 3967 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I have a picture here of Blueberry that looks a lot better than the first one in full coat. Can everybody see that? How pretty she is. That's full coat. This was the ones that animal control took at the house, and that is like beginning wintercoat, I don't expect this body to make any decisions on my case. I did not give permission to AC to enter my home. I was working with planning and zoning two months before returning to Golden Valley in December. The animal control ordinances need to be changed.
Ms. Valier, do you have any recommendations to the item that's on the agenda?
Yes.
Item number forty-two, if we can get to that, please.
That's what I'm reading now. The animal control ordinances need to be changed to match state law, and this is an example of how things need to be fixed, because they were adopting out my dogs before the hearing was even done, and during the hearing, and after the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley. I want to thank Mr. Espin for a fantastic presentation, it was very thorough, it covered a lot of information. There was a couple of things that he missed, and a couple of things I'd like to clarify. Surprisingly, this Friday will be the 36th anniversary of the predecessor to ordinance 94-1, which was Board of Supervisors Resolution 1707, which is almost entirely, fully included in 94-1. So that was the first time the county passed an ordinance, and it hadn't made any changes since then, until just recently. And I wasn't criticizing the fact that one item was not, was, I wasn't criticizing that they, it wasn't in there, because I believed it should have been in there, and that's what he was saying, and I agree with him. The big issue is twofold. One, 4-3 subsections D, E, and F give police powers to the Board of, or to the animal control officer. Let me read, basically, it says in subsection D, that the Board of, the animal control officer can basically barge into his house, into your house, and demand that you show him the dog's papers. E says they can barge into your house and demand that you show him the dog's living conditions. F states that if you get in their way, they'll arrest you or can arrest you. That exactly is what happened on December the 20th, in a case that we won't discuss any further. But... on December the 20th, in a case that we won't discuss any further. But 11-1009 is about kennel licensing, and it says that any complaint about animal cruelty under 29, 132910 or 291001 must be made in writing by either a citizen or a law enforcement, and that if the kennel is under 20 dogs, they may be subject to an inspection. If the kennel is over 20 dogs, it shall be subject to an inspection. And that's pretty powerful in state law. But the real issue that is of concern to me is the, the U.S. Supreme Court rulings. I'm going to read something, ooh, I'm going to run out of time. The U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that the area around a person's home is private. The primary purpose of the Fourth Amendment is to safeguard the privacy and security of individuals against arbitrary invasion of government officials. It goes on to say that, that it's, the administrative searches of a residence must comply with the Fourth Amendment. And that was my crucial point. We need to make sure that the law, that the actions by our people follow the law. I was in Hillary Allison's house. I know what terrible conditions are, and I don't want that ever to happen in our county again. But this is not a case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
Can you get Ms. Anderson to read me back the, the motion?
I, I would like to ask if Supervisor Bishop could restate her motion.
I don't think I can restate it verbatim, but my motion was to authorize our attorney, Mr. Esplin, to work on the animal control ordinances and combine them in a booklet to be used by county departments, and be available to our citizens at large.
Chairman Watson?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that, at least to me, that's, that would be premature. I would like to see a motion that, that we have Mr. Esplin, if we want to use him, but we have the departments that, that oversee the animals, get together, much like they do with the properties that we clean up, you know, the attorney's office, the sheriff, animal control, planning and zoning, those people get together and review our ordinances to make sure that we don't have any glitches in them, and come back to us to clarify those before we try to put something together that might need to be clarified later. I, I think we have a little problem with making sure everybody knows exactly what the role is or having the right authority to go in and do things. That would be mine for us to clarify ours before we have somebody codify everything to get something out to the public. That, that was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Very good suggestion. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Do you wish to clarify your?
Actually, Chairman Watson, I'll withdraw my motion totally, and let Supervisor Johnson make a motion in place of it.
Then I'll withdraw my second. Supervisor Johnson, it's your opportunity.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to have the, I'd do it through the county manager to put together a group of all, all departments to come back with a revision of the county ordinances pertaining to animals.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to investigate and suggest changes in accordance with, in the cooperation with all department. That's my understanding. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to also thank Supervisor Bishop, because I think that's a great idea. After this is all over and everything, to put together a booklet, so everybody's on the same page. It's a great idea.
Great idea. Great idea. Okay. There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 43, discussion, possible action. Review the proposed change in salary and reporting structure of the position number 200507, the economic development director, as recommended in the tentative fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget. We did discuss this earlier in executive session. And I will make a motion that we, we accept and the proposed action as it is proposed in the, in the tentative budget, and also the economic development director report to the county manager. I believe the proposal is for the, for $84,261, which is step two, director range 129. I believe that's correct. So I'll float that as a motion.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. Now, I'm sure we'll have discussion.
Yeah, as I said last time, when we took this out of the agenda, it is nothing about the person on the job. I have an issue with making a director with, with no reports, and I think it's an excessive amount. So I'll be voting no on this.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, I would believe that we will ask the clerk for a roll
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
No.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion does not carry.
Okay, thank you. Chair would entertain any alternative motions?
I, I make a motion that that position, I don't have it in the number in front of me, receive a 10% raise, that's the five left behind, and another 5%, and to be, you know, to be reevaluated every year, based on performance.
We have a motion for a 10%, and I believe that's based on 67,496.
Right.
And that the position be reassessed each year.
Right, based on performance.
Mr. Chairman, would, may I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Would that include changing the reporting structure also?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for 10% based on current, and the reporting structure remains the same? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Could I have a clear, who, who will?
Hendricks.
Who will he be reporting to? Yes, so we are changing the reporting structure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I had never had an issue with that.
So the reporting structure, then, would be reporting directly with Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Chairman, have a question?
Yes, Supervisor Johnson.
If, if we're moving it and it's coming under the county manager, will we also be moving that person over into the county building, where you can obviously have closer contact with the county managers instead of being separated by such a long distance?
As I understand it, Supervisor Johnson, he'll be remaining at the Development Services Building, but we can ask Mr. Hendricks.
Currently, Mr. Chairman, the Development Services Director is the advocate for developers who come into the Development Services Building. And he needs to be, I believe, he needs to be very accessible in that regard. So in this proposal, his reporting station would still be Development Services Building.
I, I have no problem with that.
The only problem I would see with that would be that if you're reporting to the manager, and, and this would be our first point of contact, would be our economic development director. Usually, on most kinds of deals, you, you work with the manager to do it. The only time you would be working with planning and zoning is when, once you get, you know, farther along the thing, I would think that they would, should be inside the county building. That's just mine.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
And Mr. Chairman, let me talk logistics a little bit.
Certainly.
Because if he does stay in the Development Services Building, you know, there are some advantages, there are some advantages if he was over in the administration building. But however, as you, as you all are aware, we've designated different rooms for the different supervisors to be able to use currently. And I have only, I believe, one vacant room left in that suite, and that's being currently used by guests who need a place to work, like our lobbyists and other people. So I don't really have any space available in admin.
Mr. Hendricks, I, I believe that you can manage him in another building, as you do others that are under your report. So I have no issue with that. There's such a thing called a phone. So I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, we probably ought to have roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And I believe that concludes our agenda today.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a pleasure doing business with you.